for Tuesday, March 11th. If you'll please rise, and the young ladies from our Girl Scout troop will help lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the freedom of liberty for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, in the unity and justice for all.
Thank you, ladies.
Outstanding.
This is the most enthusiastic pledge we've had.
I think that's the best pledge we've had in a really, really long time, so can you come back every meeting, please?
It was enthusiastic.
It was enthusiastic, yes. Okay. We will move on to the roll call.
And I get to follow that?
Yes.
Mr. Boyce? Mr. Davis?
Uh, here.
Mr. Elliott?
Present.
Mr. Johnson?
Present.
Mr. Peterson?
Excited to be here.
Mr. Schwartz?
Present.
Mr. Smith?
Present.
Mr. Thurston?
Ms. Wiles?
Present.
Madam President, you have a call.
Thank you. We will move on to the approval of the Executive Session Memorandum for our February 25th, 2025 meeting.
Move to approve.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve the memorandum from the Executive Session. This is a hand vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Seven zero. Approval of the minutes from February 25th, 2025.
Move to approve the minutes.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes from February 25th. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Seven zero. Approval of the agenda.
Move to approve.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Seven zero. Petitions or comments by citizens who are present. I do not have any sheets, but if anyone is interested in saying something, there are forms on the back desk that you can fill out and then hand to the clerk. So, Mayor Jensen.
Good evening, Madam President, members of the council. Thanks for allowing my new friends to do the Pledge of Allegiance. That's always a good reminder of why we do what we do. So, thank you again for having them here tonight. Hey, a few things I'd like to go over quickly tonight. First of all, we announced today a new partnership between the city of Noblesville and the Noblesville Schools Education Foundation. You all are well aware that five years ago, when our administration came into office, we put a very heavy emphasis on mental health in the city of Noblesville. And in fact, we launched a proactive paramedicine program with your support in early 2020, not even knowing there was a global pandemic around the corner. But that program, Noble Act, has been a true staple of Noblesville and also hailed as an example around the state of Indiana. And because of that program, we've been able to have over 6,000 runs for service and assist over 2,000 at-risk individuals in our community to get the support that they need. So, I want to thank you for your continued investment in that. We are making major strides in our community in erasing the stigma around mental health. Well, today, we announced a partnership with the Noblesville Schools Education Foundation. Back in 2018, they established a grant fund that they were able to collect some dollars to support teachers and students who needed additional mental health support outside of the school system, or maybe even outside of what their insurance would allow. And every year, they've been able to assist hundreds of individuals who work for the city, I'm sorry, that work for Noblesville Schools or attend Noblesville Schools. As you all know, Noblesville Schools is our largest employer in the city of Noblesville. So, we announced today that we're going to be coming alongside them with an additional $50,000 grant to go towards that program to aid in the mental health for our teachers and students. We have Noble Act that is constantly, every single day, out on the streets in our community, helping those. This is another way that we're going to lean into action steps with Noblesville Schools. So, I just want to thank you for allowing that partnership. Thanks, Noblesville Schools, for thinking outside the box in a creative way to show cohesive alignment around a shared common goal in the city of Noblesville. So, that was announced today, and appreciate your support on that. I also want to take a little time. In 2025, one of my goals is to highlight some of the work that we've done over the past five years with your support. Data-driven statistics that kind of tell the story of what we do on a daily basis in the city of Noblesville. This is something that we are constantly evaluating. I say, you know, the word of the year so far has been Doge. We've been focused on Doge all the time in the city of Noblesville, constantly looking in to make sure that we are spending taxpayer dollars wisely within our community. So, I want to spend some time in 2025 at each council meeting, really highlighting certain departments or different topics and going over some data points, so you are equipped with that, and then the public that's here is equipped with that as well. And thanks to Counselor Schwartz, who called me a few weeks ago and had this conversation. I thought I'd start on the topic of multifamily in the city of Noblesville. We oftentimes hear rumblings or conversations around multifamily, multifamily improvement, multifamily usage rates. And so, I thought I would take a moment to kind of go over some data points, so you have them going forward. And that also gives us a chance to kind of correct the record of any maybe falsities that are going around, around this topic. So, I want to first highlight and talk here within downtown Noblesville. You may recall that in the past five years, we have five approved multifamily developments in our core downtown, and that would be Nexus, Levinson, Lofts on 10th, Federal Hill Commons, and East Bank. I'm proud to say that we have nearly, out of those five developments alone, a nearly 80% overall occupancy rate of those multifamily units in our downtown. Now, I'd like to drill in a little bit deeper, because there are some skewed numbers here, just so you're aware of that. I can tell you, Lofts on 10th, which is right here, north on 10th Street, has 100% occupancy. The Levinson is at a 98% occupancy. Nexus, which for anyone tuning in is the old Marsh site on the west edge of downtown, is at a 98% occupancy. Federal Hill Commons is at a 50% occupancy, but I would like to point out that they didn't even receive their full certificate of occupancy until November 26th of this past year. So, we're looking at a three-month timeline that they're at 20, at 50%. And even East Bank, that didn't even receive its certificate of occupancy until mid-December, is at nearly 20% capacity. So, all incredibly strong numbers, and even Federal Hill and East Bank, we're in constant communication. Those are privately-owned. All these are privately-owned developments. They all are very comfortable with how they are leasing up going forward. So, I just wanted to make sure that narrative got out there, that in downtown, we're about at 80%, but most are at a nearly 100% occupancy rate in our downtown. Now, I'd like to take that a little bit further and kind of build on that conversation. A few months ago, we met, actually, about a month and a half ago, we met jointly with the Noblesville School Board of Trustees, and the conversation came up about multifamily and its impact, and its impact on students, student population within the school system. And I thought that was an important question to drill down on more, so we can have the facts around that. So, in our five urban multifamily developments, the five that I just highlighted, there are nine students occupying those residences. There is one student at Federal Hill Commons, and there are eight students at Nexus. So, there are nine in our downtown multifamily, which all along, we've felt like that urban multifamily really isn't going to be an impact on students. Since 2019, so any new development, multifamily-related, since our administration has taken place, so that is going to add in Lavina, which is at 146 and River Road, as well as Promenade there at State Road 32 in Little Chicago. And with all of those, since 2019, there are 27 students occupying all those multifamily, the new multifamily that we have approved, the majority of which being in Nexus, Lavina, and Promenade, which are really non-urban multifamily developments. They're more of the suburban multifamily developments. So, I felt like that was just an important number and statistics to highlight, as we continue to have this conversation around impact, not only just on rental rates in downtown and across the city, but then citywide when it comes to student population. I did work with Noblesville Schools on gathering some of that data. I can tell you, multifamily district-wide within the city of Noblesville, there's about 7% of school-populated children reside in multifamily developments in the city of Noblesville, so 7%. So, again, sorry, that's a little wonky for you tonight, but I just think that data is really, really important as narratives get out in public. I think you need to be equipped with that. The public needs to be equipped with that. And then, one last thing I'll just highlight, since we're talking about downtown multifamily. Hopefully, you've had a chance in the last couple of weeks to visit our friends at Thai Sushi House. The new restaurant opened on the first floor of Levinson. I've had their pad thai. It's awesome. There's also a boba tea place right next door. The Jensen kids are thrilled about that. And then, we'll be opening Bacado in late March, early April, which is the new Mexican restaurant in Federal Hill Commons. So, just in time for the summer months and summer concert series, you'll have an opportunity for some Margs out there in Federal Hill Commons. So, with that, happy to answer any questions that you have, but wanted to go over some data with you tonight.
Could you give the number of units? How many units are downtown? 770?
Roughly around, probably pushing 800.
And then Promenade and Lavina adds?
They probably add 250 each.
Okay. So, 1,300 total units. Thank you.
With 27 students.
With 27 students.
27 students, yeah.
Other questions of Mayor Jensen?
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
All right. We will move on to council committee reports. The first one up is our Utilities Committee, and Mr. Johnson.
Thank you. The Utilities Committee met on February 27th, and Mr. Boyce, although not here, would be very proud to know that we started promptly at the start time of 9:00. That seems to be a recurring theme with Mr. Boyce. I don't know. Present were certainly council members, Mike Davis, Evan Elliott, myself. Mr. Peterson was absent, having been ill. Joining us from the mayor's office was Community Development Director Sarah Reed, Jonathan McGo, and his several members of his utility staff. Mr. Stricker reviewed the 2024 financial year-end report and stated that revenues and expenses were slightly favorable when compared with budget. We had discussions centering around upcoming ordinances, the rate change, the effect it's had, the rate change from last year, other capital priorities, spending, and public outreach. Several discussions centered around cybersecurity and the need to keep our wastewater treatment plant safe from outside bad actors, if you will. Mr. McGo then went on to state that the Baker Tilly, the outside consultant's 2023 financial report found that the utilities had strong cash holdings and would be tracking upcoming bond issues. In terms of ordinance needs, Mr. McGo discussed the Barrett Law projects upcoming and how they may impact the utilities, in addition to pre-treatment ordinance amendments that may need to come on board. Mr. McGo certainly aware that the Embrace Downtown, that several of us are involved with, project was going to include and impact the utilities with downtown sewer separation projects, and everyone was certainly in favor of doing that, as it impacts our quality of life downtown. Upcoming major projects, several build-operate-transfer projects are underway, including some solids handling, some lift station pump replacements, work on the headworks where the waters first come into the utility, and then some miscellaneous sewer work and improvements to our biogas recovery system. And that's about, that's where we discuss. There are no actions are necessary, although there will be ordinance, ordinances to come before the council in future months. Thank you.
Any questions of Mr. Johnson? No? We will move on to then the Roads Committee, and Mr. Schwartz.
Yes, Madam President. Roads Committee met Friday, March 7th. Mark Boyce, Todd Thurston, and myself was present. Some of the first topics, new topics we discussed. Pleasant Street Phase 1, Walnut Street worked to begin in April. Going to be putting some final finishes on the roadway. Pleasant Street Phase 2, there's going to be some lane closures. Greenfield Avenue and 16th Street this month, until the 14th. Pleasant Street Phase 3, 32 Hag Road, Duke Energy is going to have to do some utility relocation. So, look for some lane closures and flagmen on the 10th or the 11th. And that work should not take very long. They're hoping 9:30 to 2:30. Little Chicago and Carydon Road roundabout, starting some talks about that. I can't remember if Mark mentioned last time, they are going to resurface around that bridge construction here soon. Trail was discussed, the trail from Forest Park to Federal Hill, they're going to be doing some utility work. Logan and Nixon Street, the week of 317, for a couple of weeks. So, look for some, some lane closures in that area as well. Looks like they're going to be paving in mid-April. It's going to take about two weeks. Hopefully, that will get finished, and that trail will be officially opened. Innovation Mile, 141st Street, 141st Street is open. One-week closure this spring. Later this month, or in April, for the final asphalt coat there and some sanitaries or crossing stuff. Embrace Downtown, some informal meetings, preliminary concepts will continue. Looking to have something solid, hopefully mid-March. Let's, yeah. Amal County Projects, we did discuss 146 and Hazel Dell. Looked at the county's social media, and some preliminary drawings on how the intersection is going to look. Also, the county is looking into the intersection of 146 and Gray Road as well, so keep your eyes out on that. Anything regarding Pleasant Street, you can go to reimaginepleasanestreet.com, always look at the city's social media for that. Oh, and one last thing. Don't have any specifics, because this is kind of Westfield-related in the state, but they're going to be closing State Road 32 this summer, so keep your eyes out on that. And with that said, that's all I have.
Great. Any questions of Mr. Schwartz? Okay. We will move on then to the Finance Committee. Mr. Davis?
Thank you, Madam President. We met March 6th. Pete Schwartz, Aaron Smith, and myself. Caitlin Kessner talked to us about a year in 2024 and Cumberland's carry-forward resolution. And just while we discuss authorization to invest in non-local certificates of deposit. That and the claims document review comes to the council with a favorable recommendation.
Wonderful.
And I move to approve the claim.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve. The claims is presented. This is a hand vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Seven zero. Thank you. We'll move on to previously discussed ordinances. Council to consider ordinance number 04-02-25, an ordinance annexing approximately 1,137 acres in Wayne Township, and Resolution RC-7-25, adopting a fiscal plan for property adjacent to Oleo Road, 156th Street, Cynthia Ann Road, and 146th Street. Do you see any?
Good evening. As you may recall, approximately a month ago, I introduced this ordinance for annexation into the city of limits of Noblesville. Again, it is a super voluntary annexation. I asked that the public hearing be set for this evening's meeting. The area that you see in the multicolored areas is the total acreage to be basically annexed, except for this orange area. This is already a part of the corporate campus, so that, this area here is already within the city. the city limits. But anything that basically is above that line and to the east is basically what is being annexed with the 1,137 acres. Again, the fiscal plan, we have a resolution to adopt the fiscal plan this evening. If that occurs, then at your next meeting, you would be able to vote on the actual ordinance for adoption into the city limits. With that, I will ask if you have any questions. There is representative from Cronin Associates, if you should have any questions on the fiscal analysis.
Any questions of Ms. Yelton? On the annexation. See, not. Then I will go ahead and open the public hearing for ordinance number 04-02-25.
Madam President.
Mr. Davis.
Saying nobody can forward, I move to close the public hearing for ordinance 04-02-25.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to close the public hearing for ordinance 04-02-25. This is a hand vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Seven, zero.
Madam President.
Mr. Davis.
I move to approve Resolution RC-7-25.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve Resolution RC-7-25 as presented. It's a hand vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Seven, zero. All right. We'll move on to Council to Consider Ordinance Number 05-02-25, an ordinance authorizing the issuance of the City of Noblesville, Indiana taxable economic development revenue bonds, Series 2025 Edward Rose Phase 1 Project, and the lending of the proceeds thereof to Edward Rose Development Company. Amy Smith.
Good evening. This ordinance was introduced at your last meeting of February. There have been no changes to the ordinance, but just as a quick refresher, the bond will be for an amount not to exceed 5.5 million with an interest rate not to exceed 8%. The financing and project were presented to the Economic Development Commission at a meeting earlier, sorry, late last week, and they did approve a resolution authorizing the issuance of the bond. Happy to answer any questions. Steve Ball and his counsel are here tonight as well, if you have any questions for them.
Any questions of Mrs. Smith? Of the fellow person?
Madam President.
Mr. Davis.
I move to approve ordinance number 05-02-25, as presented.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve ordinance number 05-02-25 as presented. This is a roll call vote. Ms. Lees.
Mr. Davis.
Aye.
Mr. Elliott.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
Mr. Peterson.
Aye.
Mr. Schwartz.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Wiles.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays. The ordinance is approved.
Thank you. We'll move on to Council to Consider Ordinance Number 06-02-25, an ordinance authorizing the issuance of the City of Noblesville, Indiana taxable economic development revenue bonds, Series 2025 Hyde Park J.C. Hart Phase 1 LLC Project, and the lending of the proceeds thereof to J.C. Hart Phase 1 LLC, and authorizing and approving other actions in respect there to Amy Smith.
Go again. This ordinance was also introduced at your last meeting. Like the previous ordinance, there have been no changes. This bond will be for an amount not to exceed 6.5 million, also with an interest rate not to exceed 8%. This item was also presented to the Economic Development Commission. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions of Mrs. Smith?
No questions, but Justice reminded us one through finance, and we've had lots of discussions at that point where we, our committee, are.
Okay, thank you.
Madam President.
Mr. Davis.
I move to approve ordinance 06-02-25, as presented.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve ordinance 06-02-25 as presented. This is a roll call vote. Ms. Lees.
Mr. Elliott.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
Mr. Peterson.
Aye.
Mr. Schwartz.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Wiles.
Aye.
Mr. Davis.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays. The ordinance is approved.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Moving on to new ordinances for discussion. Council to Consider Ordinance Number 08-03-25, an ordinance to consider text amendments to ordinance number 35-10-23 regarding bulk standards and signage for approximately 600 acres, known as Finch Creek Plan Development, south of East 166th Street, west of Oleo Road, north of East 156th Street, and east of Bowden Road. Joyceanne Yelton.
Good evening again. Again, this, these.
Hold on, Joyceanne, hold on. We need somebody to move to.
Move, introduce.
Second.
Down, Ms. Yelton.
Thank you. We'll try this again.
Right, thank you.
Again, this is an ordinance regarding text amendments to the Finch Creek Park that planned development that we adopted more than a year ago. These text amendments basically involve maximum lot coverage for residential uses. That's been increased by 5% from 55% to 60%. It's amended the area D relating to the commercial area. It changed the terminology of a blade sign to a neighborhood blade sign, and it would allow for temporary signage for both amenity areas. Again, the public hearing was held at the Plan Commission at its February meeting. It was sent forward to the council with a recommendation for adoption with a vote of 10 yeses and zero nays.
Great.
In the audience, we do have representatives from Polte Homes, if you should have any specific questions.
Okay. Any questions of Ms. Yelton or Polte Homes?
No questions, just a comment. I drive past this every week going to church, and I see homes starting to pop out of the ground, so it seems like things are moving appropriately.
Madam President.
Mr. Davis.
I move to approve ordinance 08-03-25, as presented.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve ordinance number 08-03-25 as presented. This is a roll call vote. Ms. Lees.
Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
Mr. Peterson.
Aye.
Mr. Schwartz.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Davis.
Aye.
Mr. Elliott.
Aye.
Ms. Wiles.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays. The ordinance is approved.
Great. Council to Consider Ordinance Number 09-03-25, an ordinance amending ordinance number 70-09-16, the adopted preliminary development plan for property at 4903 Castamere Drive.
Move, introduce.
Second.
Second. Joyceanne Yelton.
Good evening. This site is basically located at the northeast intersection of State Road 32 and Moon Town Road. It is part of the overall Cranbrook Plan Development. As you may recall, last year, we did amend to the north of what is Castamere Drive here to allow for a tile home development. So this is actually the Second Amendment to that overall PD ordinance. The proposed, again, use for this property is, would be a Goddard School. We're not, the use is permitted by right because it's in an R1 zoning district. However, they had to seek relief in regards to one waiver relating to a sign, a ground sign that they were proposing. Again, we did have the public hearing at the Plan Commission at their February meeting. It was sent forward with a favorable recommendation. This is basically the elevation drawings that they have also submitted for their proposed amendment. Again, there are representatives here this evening from representing the Goddard School as well as the engineer for the site. Should you have any questions?
Okay. Any questions of Ms. Yelton or developer slash engineer?
Madam President.
Mr. Davis.
I move to approve ordinance 09-03-25, as presented.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve ordinance number 09-03-25 as presented. This is a roll call vote. Ms. Lees.
Mr. Peterson.
Yes.
Mr. Schwartz.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Davis.
Aye.
Mr. Elliott.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
Ms. Wiles.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays. The ordinance is approved.
Great. The next two items I will be reading together. So Council to Consider Ordinance Number 10-03-25, an ordinance for a change of zoning from county zoning A2 and A2S, and city zoning of CCPD Corporate Campus Plan Development, an R1 single-family residential for approximately 1,137 acres east of Oleo Road, south and north of East 156th Street, west of Cynthiaann Road, and north and south of East 146th Street. Councils also to consider ordinance number 11-03-25, an ordinance for a change of zoning and adoption of a preliminary development plan, and an ordinance for approximately 1,137 acres, east of Oleo Road, south and north of East 156th Street, west of Cynthiaann Road, and north and south of East 146th Street.
Move, introduce.
Second.
Ms. Yelton.
This item before you is basically, was introduced for annexation, or we discussed it a little earlier this evening. This proposed development, again, has been in the works for a few years with the city administration. The property, again, is within Wayne Township, or the majority of it is, and the development will be known as Gatewood Lakes. The area contains approximately 1,140 acres. It currently has zoning districts of what would be the corporate campus in this orange area. The rest of the areas that you see are currently in Wayne Township, and they're either zoned A2 or A2S, which are county zoning districts for agricultural or agricultural subdivisions. Requested zoning in this PD would be R3, R5, and PB zoning districts. It is to be a master-planned community of single-family, two-family, traditional, single-family, custom-home, single-family, as well as multifamily, townhomes, and commercial uses. This will have approximately 140 acres of green space. It will have more than 20 miles of trails. It will have a 40-acre lake, and basically in the center of this development. There are actually five sub-districts. Those are the areas that are shown in the different colors here. Each one of those sub-districts allows its own unique uses as well as overall development standards. The comprehensive plan does show the area of Wayne Township as being part of the future growth for the city of Noblesville. It is mostly set forth as mixed residential, which, again, would allow any type of residential as well as retail and some commercial uses. Waivers, they sought several waivers. The waivers included residential and commercial bulk standards, the elimination of a 60-foot building setback line for the planned business history, that being requested due to the fact that they want to make this to be a more urban type of setting as opposed to having all the buildings sitting back from the roadway a minimum of 60 feet. There were also some residential corner lot requirements that they waived, landscaping, and basically street configurations relating to tangents and radii. At the public hearing, there were approximately four, I think there were only four, but I will say a maximum of six individuals that spoke at the meeting. Most of the concerns revolved around drainage, roadway improvements, and Mr. Thyme with Hoosier Heritage Farm also spoke. He also sent an email. I do know that he is in the audience this evening. Since the Plan Commission meeting, there have been amendments to the ordinance. Some of those amendments included architectural requirements, updated the submitted character exhibits, added townhome CCR language regarding leasing restrictions, as well as provided updated commitments, which was a separate document. Again, this was sent forward, both of these items were sent forward to the council with a favorable recommendation for adoption with 10 yeses and zero nays. Their PD motion did include all the waivers and commitments, and looking at what has been submitted, they did include the waivers and commitments as per the ordinance or by the motion by the Plan Commission. Again, this evening, Mr. Price, attorney, and the Hinky team are present to discuss or answer any specific questions. I do know that they do have a short presentation. I will ask at this point if you have any questions of staff.
Any questions of Ms. Yelton?
I have none.
Now that it's time. Mr. Price, if you'll please introduce yourself and your address.
It's like having your own pit crew. For the record, my name's Matt Price. I'm the attorney for Hinky Development Group, and I have an address of 10 West Market Street in Indianapolis, Indiana, 46204. Really appreciate the opportunity to be back in front of you this evening. A few weeks ago, we had the privilege of introducing Gatewood Lakes to the council, and shortly after that meeting, we had our neighborhood outreach meeting, which we felt went extraordinarily well, ended with a round of applause, which you don't always get in connection with a new development proposal, but I think it reflected the forethought and outreach that had gone into the project before calling everyone together. And then on February 18th, we presented before the Plan Commission and gave a more fulsome presentation of the project, like the introduction that we gave to the council back in the first part of February. Kind of picking up where Joyceanne left off, and some things that I would like to emphasize for you this evening, because we're very proud of the work that we've done since the Plan Commission meeting, and I think there are items worthy of highlighting for your consideration, have to do with the matters which the Plan Commission asked us to sharpen following their recommendation of approval, and asked that we work with staff and legal counsel to address certain matters that primarily related to architectural standards and also the process by which improvements would be approved relative to architecture. And so what we've done is the following. With regard to architectural matters, for all dwellings, we have added express language, making it clearer, as it was our intent originally, that all dwellings are subject to the four-sided architectural requirements. And so that's been added into the architectural standards that are contained in the ordinance. In addition to that, with regard to Wayne Scope, we made clear that the Wayne Scope representation, so the trim around the homes, four-sided, would include the Wayne Scope trim on all four sides. In connection with that, and this is a small detail, but an important one, we had a couple of character images that showed homes that did not have that Wayne Scope on all four sides. Those have been taken from the character imagery, so that our character imagery is 100% consistent with the verb, with the written narrative for those architectural standards. We were also asked to provide additional imagery with regard to townhomes, and we've done that as well, eliminated one from which we received comment that felt like it was not appropriate to the development, and added a new one, which has been added to the proposal for this evening, which we're very happy to share. With regard to the approval process, I want to emphasize that the approval process for architecture is multi-layered, and as we discussed a little bit during the council introduction, any improvement will require controlling developer approval as kind of an initial threshold approval. And so the Hinky Development Team will be approving anything first to determine its appropriateness and qualifications for the development with regard to architecture. The city then would also go through that process for all improvements except for custom homes. The custom home element has been accepted from the city review. And then we've made express that the architectural review board would have ultimate approval authority throughout the process. And those have been, those changes have been added to the proposal. With regard to architecture, I just want to note a couple other, what I would call cleanup items that we were asked to make by staff, which we were readily agreeable to, is that we have committed that for commercial structures, for any type of a, there would not be permitted a 90-foot uninterrupted building facade. for any type of a, there would not be permitted a 90-foot uninterrupted building facade. It would have to be a corner break or facade relief with regard to that. I think our character imagery reflects that, and so this is, in some ways, is making that verbiage consistent with the character imagery. And then we also had, in the ordinance, provision where townhomes were required to have frontage on a public street, but then the very next sentence said, "But the city would also consider private streets." We've just made that verbiage consistent, so that the city would consider that, but it's still subject to city approval for any frontage that's other than on a public street. Moving from the ordinance to the commitments, we also provided certain written commitments that were not yet prepared at the time we did our council introduction, but have been added, the first three of which relate to infrastructure improvements. So they have to do with if any private streets are included in the development, the plat of those areas that are served by private streets would require language regarding the future maintenance of those private streets. And that was developed by the city engineer. We adopted that language and put it specifically into the commitments. The second commitment has to do with the extension of a pedestrian boulevard from Innovation Mile to 146th Street, and we've made an express commitment with regard to that future pedestrian boulevard. Then, thirdly, this is one of the real benefits of having a master plan community like this. We've made a commitment to future right-of-way dedication, so that as the city requires future right-of-way dedication in connection with future planned road improvements, the commitment is already in place to make those dedications of right-of-way. And we've done that in connection with the city engineer's office as well. We've also added leasing restrictions applicable to townhomes. So generally, there is a one-year no-leasing provision for the first year after a townhome is purchased, a minimum lease term of 12 months, and then an overall cap on the number of townhouses that can be let at any one time. Then finally, at the Plan Commission hearing, there were commitments introduced with regard to Hoosier Heritage Farms, which were contained in an email, but a very detailed email, which explained certain commitments that had been negotiated with that property owner, and those have been lifted and incorporated into the commitments as well. Several of those have to do with future provisions that will be added to the covenants, conditions, and restrictions for the development itself, and they require that the Hoosier Heritage Farms owner receive the opportunity to review and approve the CCR language before it's finalized. And that's been incorporated into commitments as well. I think that's an excellent summary of what we've done since the council introduction and the Plan Commission hearing. The Hinky Development Team, Steve, Brad, Betsy, Doug, and Clint are all behind me here, and together, we're available to answer any questions that you have. I think I would like to close just by saying that how appreciative we are of this partnership and the opportunity to work with staff. I felt like the time that we've had since our Plan Commission meeting on February 18th was well-spent time. The product is a better product. It's a sharper representation of the high quality that the Hinky family will bring forward, and we look forward to continue to work on this together. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you. Any questions of Mr. Price? Mr. Johnson?
Only one, Mr. Price. Good evening. Thanks. Thanks for being here tonight. You mentioned private street versus public street. Assuming that the private street construction standards are similar to what we have with our public streets, and that the city engineer is reviewed and is comfortable with whatever variances there may be.
Yes, I think, in fairness, I think that if a phase of the project were brought forward with a private street, it would still be subject to city engineer's approval as to the design, the dimensions, if you will, of that street. What I believe the engineer's office has done is just make that potentially possible to bring forward, and if he ultimately approved it, the city approved it, then it would also be subject to those future maintenance obligations. So I don't want to over-commit him in the sense that he's agreed to any particular design, but he's left open the possibility that could be brought forward.
I certainly understand. In situations where the city has taken over a private street for whatever reason, if it is lesser than our typical standards, then we have assumed additional maintenance and want to avoid that as best we can. Thank you.
Other questions?
I have two, but I'll have to pour for Sarah.
Okay.
But if somebody else wants to.
I just want to say, to tag on to what Dave said, Mr. Johnson said, "The bigger issue with private streets is that long-term maintenance, once the developer pulls out," and so I appreciate that commitment. And also, the rental, that's been a sticking point that we've back and forth. I appreciate that you committed that early. So thank you.
And I'll tag on to that, that it's committed to a cap of 15% of the development, correct?
15%. There is a carve-out, a couple of carve-outs, one having to do with for a townhouse development where there's a single owner, so like a stacked flats-type development, where it's held to the standard where there'd be a single owner with professional management and a CCR, no less restrictive than an owner occupied. And then we also have kind of a unique situation that the Hinkies have experienced in some of their other projects, which is a situation where a person wants to live in the community and lease a townhome while their home is being built. And so we've provided a limited exception for that possibility as well.
Thank you.
I thought your carve-out seemed very graphic.
For Ms. Reed, can you, I know this one's set up a little bit different than our normal housing commitments or our housing processes. Can you talk a little bit about, within this scale development, which ones will come back to us for review?
Yes, the two commercial subsections will come back for review and approval through Plan Commission and council. Right now, what the Hinky team has done is set up those two areas for a general idea of what it may look like, uses, and the concept imagery, so that we have an idea of the overall concept of those areas. But those two sections will come back to. I think they're red and orange on your site plan.
Is the multifamily included in that?
Yes.
Just for everybody, that's Section 10C of your ordinance. That's specifically spelled out in the ordinance.
Great. Thank you. In the ordinance, it also talks about permitted, conditional, and non-permitted uses. Can you just talk for the public about what that means?
Sure. So a permitted use is something that what we, as planners, say is permitted by right, which means if it is a use that is exactly what's on that chart, it's allowed. We don't have to come back to a body like you or Plan Commission to have approval. If it's not permitted, it's the exact opposite. It has to come through a zoning process of sorts for a public process. And conditional is something that the planning team, through the development of this, considers something that could work here, but because of the circumstances, let's say, traffic, lighting, or maybe it's a unique use that has maybe some unique factor outside of that, it's just best to have the public be aware. So that's what that conditional use means. Gets it out here, but we've anticipated it being something that could fit.
Thank you. The only last question I have is, it's only because I saw Brian there in the back. Normally, we see, in an approval like this, we see what an interim sign would look like. How would that be worked through in this new process?
Yep. And we've talked with the Hinky team on this as well. It would come through a program of signs. So they would put together a package, and that program of signs just goes strictly to Plan Commission. Staff would review it, do a staff report, similar to how they do for rezonings.
Awesome. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I have a couple of questions.
Hold on just a second, Mr. Elliott. Oh, Mr. Elliott has a question.
No, just piggybacking off of Mr. Smith here. As we move forward, this is just for everybody involved in the process, the Hinky team especially, I would love to see a more robust branding programming for what is to come. This is kind of the first introduction that I've gotten through my materials of the market at Gatewood and Heritage Commons. I know we'll have Deer Creek Village. So just seeing those programs of signs and understanding the direction for the branding moving forward, because this is going to be a very, a new thoroughfare within our city, and so that's obviously a very important component. But I want to thank the whole Hinky team for being adaptable and making necessary changes very quickly. You guys have been on the ball, so thank you very much.
Mr. Peterson?
Just over the last five years, we have seen a lot of projects come through Hyde Park and this project that are very attractive, really great for the community, but they require extensive amount of waivers to the UDO. And I appreciate that we're going to go through that this summer.
Yes.
It is much needed.
Yes, it is.
It will save us a lot of time with the waivers. And then, we're not presenting a project that is this attractive, that, oh my God, we've given all these waivers, but they all make sense in a new urban environment. How will this project fit and dovetail with the new UDO? What standards are we going to kind of follow? That's my concern.
Yeah. This project sets its own standards, because it is a plan development ordinance. It has its own. And in fact, if it defaults to the UDO for any, anything, it's this UDO in time.
Today.
Today. Yes. And so as we move forward, though, what we'll be considering, just for everybody's awareness, is past variances or waivers that we've given over projects. And we have an accounting of, you know, we've done setbacks or buffers or building heights. The planning team does a great job. They all have running lists of things we need to amend as we get into. We typically do it once or twice a year. But we have a running list, and we have stats on what we've waived, and so we'll take a look at those. And if it is something that benefits this project, we can work with them on making an amendment if we need to, to allow them to use our new UDO.
Thank you.
Any other questions of staff?
Did we consider, we were going to move away from the ARB to a PUD committee? Are we anywhere near? I mean, I like, I guess, okay. So I like the idea that you mentioned it comes back to the planning staff, but there's the backstop of the ARB. I'm just curious if the PUD committee is still in that mix.
Yep. We ended up putting the PUD committee that looks at the overall plan developments, we ended up putting that a little bit on hold with the whole conversation of redoing our unified development ordinance and our comprehensive master plan together, because it didn't make sense to modify that without going through all of the process. So we can, there's ways to do. I know you've mentioned, like, mini BZAs and mini Plan Commissions. There's other processes we can adopt that may help make some things more smooth. So it is kind of on a hold. And I will say, I believe that a comprehensive planning and a UDO amendment process is going to take us at least 12 months, and that's being very generous. I would probably say 16 to 18 months, if we're really being holistic.
We're three years into it, so.
That's right. We have a good set of data to start with. How about that? So we'll hit the ground running.
The response that the council has given, several comments over the past year of public streets, private streets, maintenance, and stuff that's going on in committees, I appreciate that Hinky is the first one to really incorporate those upfront and quickly. And I think that's going to add to our list as we go forward and make the UDO process.
Yep, absolutely. And we have, in the interim, we have Dan Weeks, who does a great job of helping supplement our Architectural Review Board with his own staff report. And we'll continue that throughout this year, and take a lot of the feedback that he has into those amendments.
And I appreciate, even in the ARB committee, you get 10 or 15 revisions, and you weigh through them and say, "This one's ridiculous. This one's ridiculous. This one's..." And you work through those and realize that the UDO has really gotten in the way of some.
Yep, absolutely. Yep. And that's why I think this double ARBs, you know, so Hinky has their own architectural review before it comes to us, that double architectural review really helps, because they have their own standard, and then we can supplement if there's anything on top of that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything else?
Sorry.
Mr. Hughes?
Madam President, thanks. I just wanted to, a couple things. First of all, sometimes even as a lawyer, it's not fun to work with lawyers. And Mr. Hinky is a lawyer, Mr. Price is a lawyer, and I just want to say it's been great to work with him. They've been really accommodating to our comments and questions, and have worked very quickly to resolve things. I know the council got a final version of this yesterday, late, which was really early this morning for you, and I apologize for that, but happy to answer any questions over the revisions. I think Matt hit them all. There's a couple that weren't in what sent to you, but Matt did mention to you, and I just wanted to highlight those for you, that they are in front of you now. First is Section 11D, which is that language he mentioned about townhome sections. We made that, public streets are required within townhome sections unless permitted by the city. So if we want to permit a private one, we can, but we made it very clear, as Matt said, that those are required. On page 40, we removed some of the architectural exhibits that he mentioned, because the Wayne's coding wasn't shown, so we just pulled those out entirely. Page 45, you'll see, there's an exhibit on the townhomes that include the full masonry version. There wasn't one of those in there, but we intended for that to be there, so we made sure that's in what's in front of you. And then the final change that wasn't what was sent to you yesterday, Exhibit G, we talked about building facades, and Matt mentioned this, the 90 feet or greater in length that said it encouraged to have an offset, we changed that to must have an offset. Matt covered all those. But I just wanted you to know that those changes have been made since what was sent to you this morning.
Great. Thank you very much.
Just one other comment. Mr. Peterson, you mentioned the PUD committee. If that's something that becomes part of our UDO, we would probably come back to you and recommend amending this, so it doesn't go to ARB. The backstop right now is in it is that this will go to the Plan Department for their review, and if they think the heightened architecture that's been approved by the Hinky team meets this, that's the end of it. If they think it doesn't, then we would have ARB as a backstop to referee disputes.
Well, I appreciate there was a lot of, that was my concern at the beginning, the control of Planning Director, but the items that you listed seem very intuitive, that it should not come, it should not come to the council. But a lot of things that will still go to ARB again through the council. So I appreciate that compromise.
Anything else?
Madam President?
Mr. Davis?
I move to approve ordinances number 10-3-25 and number 11-3-25 as presented.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve ordinances number 10-03-25, as well as number 11-3-25 as presented. This is a roll call vote. Ms. Lees?
Mr. Schwartz?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Elliott?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Peterson?
Aye.
Ms. Watts?
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays. The ordinances are approved.
Wonderful.
Thank you.
We'll move on to council to consider resolution RC-15-25, a resolution authorizing the investment of public funds pursuant to IC 5-13-9-5. Mr. Spalding?
Madam President, members of the council, Jeff Spalding, CFO and Controller, and this is a routine authorization that is part of a series of different types of authorizations that we have to regularly get from the council, that keeps us in compliance with state law around when we invest our reserves and working capital cash to, you know, maximize returns on that. And one of those authorizations is the authority to invest in CDs offered by banks across the state of Indiana that are certified as authorized fiduciaries by the Treasurer of State. There's a whole program that establishes that, but we have to have the authorization of the council, so that when we're making our investment decisions, we have the opportunity to look across the state at the best options. And this has to be reviewed and approved each year, and so this will keep that authorization in place through March of 2026.
Before we let you keep going, how are the investments doing?
How are they doing?
Yeah.
They're doing well. We just had a presentation to the Finance Committee, two Finance Committees meetings ago, and, you know, we're earning above what we would be able to earn just in our demand deposit checking accounts. And we have a very skilled investment advisor with First Source Bank that is quite a veteran in this area, and we believe does an excellent job.
Still no Bitcoin, though, right?
No, that's not allowed.
Any other questions?
And even if it were.
Any additional questions for Mr. Spalding?
Thank you, Mr. Spalding.
Thanks.
Madam President?
Mr. Davis?
I move to approve resolution RC-15-25.
Second?
It has been moved and seconded to approve resolution RC-15-25 as presented. This is a hand vote. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Seven, zero. Council to consider resolution RC-6-25A, a resolution amending resolution RC-6-25, and authorizing encumbrance carry forward from budget year 2024. A resolution amending resolution R C dash 6 dash 25 and authorizing encumbrance carry forward from budget year 2024. Caitlin Kestner, good evening.
Good evening. Caitlin Kestner, Deputy Controller. About a month ago, I brought forward R C 6 25 to carry forward encumbrances from 2024 to 2025 for items that were budgeted for in the prior year or prior years that had not yet been spent as of December 31st. After that meeting, I unfortunately found that the report that I used to create R C 6 25 had data as of January 31st, 2025, and not as of December 31st, 2024. This caused balances in that original resolution to be lower by the amount of January expenditures on these encumbrances. That difference totaled $798,017. The accurate total encumbrance carry forward amount is $9.1 million, with 2.5 million relating to ARPA funds that were required to be encumbered by prior year end and 3.9 million relating to the general fund. I sincerely apologize for my error, and I've reviewed the process that I've used to create the report. And I can assure you that will not happen again in future years. Thank you.
Any questions of Ms. Kestner? Mrs. Kestner.
Madam President.
Mr. Davis.
I move to approve resolution R C dash 6 dash 25A as presented.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve resolution R C dash 6 dash 25A as presented. This is a hand vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Seven, zero. Mr., I'm going to mess this up. I apologize. Castetter and Mr. Hester, I apologize. I did not receive these cards until just a second ago. So if you would like to come forward and make some comments, you're certainly welcome to do so. If you'll please state your name and your address.
Yeah, my name's Todd Hester, and I live at 15044 Cynthia Road. Thank you. And I just have a few questions and concerns, and primarily it's, it's focused on this area here. My, my house is right here, right across the street from the main, what is the proposed main entrance of it. So per the last meeting with the planning board, it was stated that there would be a right turn in lane and a center turn in lane to the Cynthia Road entrance. Currently, according to the plan drawing, there's no way to accomplish this without a significant bridge project or moving the location of the entrance. I've seen two possible options so far, so I'm not sure which one is accurate. I see the one here. And this shows the entrance on the north side of the bridge. And there's a bridge that's in my front yard. And you can kind of see, I have a laser pointer. Can I use it?
Sure.
Is that okay? So you can see right here is where my house is, this area here, and the bridge is right here where this proposed entrance is. So there's a blind hill just to the north of where this would be built. And I think it'll, it will end up being a major risk to the hundreds of cars that are entering and exiting each day. Additionally, while this project expands over the next eight to 10 years, there'll be a significant risk to the heavy equipment and personnel such as dump trucks, concrete trucks, you know, trucks pulling long trailers, since that is a blind hill there. And I mean, and the entrance is proposed to be right at the other side of this blind hill. So my question to the council would be, what kind of risk analysis is to be considered for the location of this entrance and what risk is acceptable? The other option shows a possible entrance to the south of the bridge, which would be right here. And this would be right across from the Castetter's residence. And it does not support the idea of having a right turn in lane and a center turn lane as a possibility due to the bridge location unless there's a significant road and bridge project plan. So a couple of questions I have are, has there been a study or an analysis to how this may be accomplished? And is there going to be another bridge project taking place in my front yard? So I'd also like to cover the concerns concerning, you know, the flood zone in my property. So right here, you can kind of see this, like, kind of wedge shape that funnels down right here. This is a huge bottleneck for the floodwaters that, that go well north of my property. This goes miles north and then on into Madison County. It all flows down to my, literally my front yard where the bridge is. So per the proposed plan, there's going to be construction taking place on the west side of Cynthia Road in the current floodplain. The water in this area flows from miles to the north and bottlenecks in my front yard and to the southwest. So you'll see right here, this little border right here. This is Mud Creek, goes to Hoosier Heritage Farm, crosses 146th Street. But this is a huge, huge bottleneck area, and that area is extremely prone to flooding. So during the construction of that bridge in 2018, that road was raised eight feet. So my road, or my yard used to be level with the county road. That road was raised eight feet and literally levied me in. So, so anything that is detrimental to the west side of Cynthia Road during that construction has a, has a huge impact on me. So so my question would be, has there been a study or an analysis as to how the floodplain or the flow of water from the north may be impacted from this construction? And is there any planned work to be done on Mud Creek for the better flow of the floodwaters? I don't know if that's involved in this construction project. Those are my two, you know, big hitter concerns and questions concerning that entrance area to that east Gatewood side. Other, other, just two other quick questions is there's, is there going to be a planned construction vehicle entrance to this Gatewood area? One, if that's proposed there on the blind hill, having heavy construction. Two, you know, this is right across from my front yard. Am I to have eight to 10 years of, you know, of construction equipment? So I didn't know if there was a planned construction entrance. And then, you know, what will be done to minimize the noise debris construction? Since this is an eight to 10 year project, to my understanding, I could be wrong on that. So I didn't know if there were special considerations taken for the folks that are living out there that may be able to minimize some of the, the incessant beeping from the construction equipment or the trucks. So I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Again, I apologize that I didn't get, so that you could ask those questions while the developer was here.
Yeah.
So I'm going to turn to Mr. Hughes and see if he has any answers. But first, did you ask these concerns at the planning commission?
I did.
Okay. And did Jim Hellman give you a response?
So, so I didn't ask all of the concerns because I was, you know, we, we got the, the brief. I was sitting there trying to get my talk points ready. And, and I, once I went home and I was digesting it a little bit more, I thought, oh, man, you know, and I said, okay, this blind hill, that wasn't something that was my concern. So at the time, because I didn't, you know, think about that here. So a few of the things that I brought up with understanding better, the bottleneck, having this overlay so I could actually point where the floodwaters go and cross under Cynthia Road and then down to the southwest through Mud Creek. And I didn't bring all that up either at the other, at the last meeting.
Okay.
This is, this is going to be somewhat repetitive, but could you go over your questions again for Mr. Price, who just walked in?
Sure, absolutely. So with, you want me to go all, all of them?
What?
So for the.
Could I summarize them for you? Do you want me to?
Absolutely.
Maybe that all. So as I understand, the concerns you had are coming down Cynthia Road there near where this proposed entrance that you were identifying was, is either at a bridge or just south of the bridge. And at the bridge, that's right at the end of a blind hill, as you put it.
Correct.
And south of it, you think there could be some concerns there, too. That's not across from your property, but there may be some concerns. And then the other question is about how this project accounts for drainage coming down. You want to point where the drainage is. It's sort of that triangle area there between those two greens. Could you point on this?
Oh, sure.
Actually, I can, right, right in this area, right?
Yeah, yep. Yeah, and that's exactly where it crosses under Cynthia. So that's where the bridge is. So I didn't, the bridge is only so wide. So I was like, well, if the promise is a right turn lane and a left turn in lane, that's four lanes in my book, right? And that's not four lanes wide at that bridge. So, so my question was, is there a plan or, or has there been an analysis on how we're going to accomplish that? And or beyond, and especially on the backside of a blind hill. On the south side of the bridge, that's still not accomplished because that bridge is only so wide. And then that takes that south of my house, which then would be closer to the Castetter's residences. And then I'll let him talk to his concerns about that.
Sure. And so then the other questions that you had, so the questions are about drainage.
Sure.
The, the lane width, particularly given the size of the bridge, would that bridge need to be expanded? And then a question about construction traffic. Is that going to be a construction traffic entrance if we know? And the noise from construction. Those are kind of the four issues.
Correct.
Right?
Yeah.
So I, I can, in terms of the drainage and the bridge, those are probably best questions for our engineering department. I'd be happy to connect you with Jim Hellman to go over those.
Okay.
I'm sure he's looked at them, and I'm sure he has thoughts on them. So I'm happy to make that connection for you. We certainly want to make sure that traffic runs correctly and safely and smoothly. In terms of construction entrances, I'm guessing, I'm going to speak a little bit for Matt and the development team, I'm guessing that we haven't specifically identified construction entrances. But those are certainly things that we can discuss as we move on and certainly would, would work with the engineering department, particularly if we think that entrance has some concerns. And then in terms of construction noise, we do have an ordinance that provides the hours for which that can occur, which I'm happy to share with you. I don't know if we've made any particular concessions or comments on when construction would occur. We're not quite there yet. So. But those are great questions to have. And I think, I think probably working with Jim Hellman or engineering department is probably the best way to help you with that. So if you want to get me your contact information, I'll make sure we get in touch with you.
Okay, I appreciate it. And thank you. And just one last thing for the construction as a consideration for the, for the heavy equipment. With everything that's going on in Fishers and all the construction that's been taking place in Fishers, the last eight years has, especially now, you cannot go up and down Cynthia Road without triaxal load after triaxal load. And Cynthia Road is a small county road. And so you're looking at 70,000 pounds coming down the road at 55 miles an hour, if you're lucky, 55. And there's not a day that I leave my house that that construction equipment is not crossing the center line. So it could be considered to, to not use Cynthia, since Fishers is already, everything going south of 69 and up south of 146 is, it's already pretty busy. So I appreciate your time. Thank you very much.
I can tell you with every project that we do, you know, the goal, you know, this is a, the goal of the engineering department is to certainly at a minimum not make it worse. And we're going to look into, there'll be a flood, there'll be a map, mapping study for Mud Creek. There'll be analysis of that bridge with the county. And there'll be analysis of the roads. And, and I don't have the answer yet, but there will be an answer and it will be better than it is now.
Okay, appreciate it.
We always want to make sure that we are enhancing the areas around it, not causing distress to them.
Well, I saw some, some safety issues, some risks there that I thought, well, you know, should be considered. So I appreciate your time.
Thank you very much. I apologize.
Thank, and thank you for bringing it up sooner rather than later in the process. Thank you for addressing and bringing that up to our attention sooner rather than later.
Always easier to get in front of it.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Mr. Hinky, we may, we may wait and let this gentleman speak and get all the concerns out if you want.
Right. If you have another gentleman who would like to speak. So Ryan Castetter? And if you'll give your name and address, please.
Yes, good evening. My name's Ryan Castetter. I live at 15002 Cynthia Road, right next to Todd Hester. A lot of my concerns are the same as his, so I'm not going to reiterate them. He covered them pretty well. There is a culvert in front of my property that also, you know, takes care of the flooding. So that is part of my concern. The other part of my concern, and it sounds like maybe it was addressed, that my contact might be Jim Hellman. But I live a lot closer to Cynthia Road, so I'm very concerned about how, if they widen that street for lanes, how close that road is to my front door. Just for the safety and privacy of my family. So I'd just like to be included in, you know, some of those preparations, planning, conversations, just to understand how much yard I'm going to be losing, you know, as they make these additions to the street. So that's the only thing about the roadway that I wanted to add. My other, you know, I guess, concerns and conversations for, for the city is have there been any discussions about annexing our properties that are just east of Cynthia Road to become City of Noblesville? Is that something of concern that I need to, to worry about in the future? And if so, timeframes around that as well.
I'm happy to address an annexation question globally, generally. So our general procedure has been, under the current administration, is that annexation comes with development. So if someone's looking to develop property, we would entertain that annexation as what we call super voluntary annexation, meaning the developer has to say they own all this property and have the rights of all these people to annex. So we have not done, since I've been here, we've done one, what we call involuntary annexation, which means we've annexed where the people weren't specifically asking for it. And that is only because the development was built, and then we went and annexed the development after the fact. So we're, this, this administration is not looking to annex folks that aren't wanting to be part of the city. And so if there was an interest from you to be part of the city, we'd be absolutely willing to entertain that. But that's not something that we've, we're going out and annexing people that aren't, aren't interested. That's been this administration's view.
Okay. Can I ask a follow up question to that? And then, and since that it might be an involuntary, what's kind of the notices or convers, you know, what, what do we get? What kind of communication do we get?
Yeah, you would be absolutely notified. And so the, those annexations, the statute changed a number of years ago. There would be a number of public meetings that have to happen first. Joyce Sands over here looking at me because it was not a fun process and we had to do the one. So it's not something we enjoy doing, nor would, nor do we have any plans at all. So I, like, I want to be completely clear. There's no desire to annex anybody in the city who isn't wanting to be part of the city or is selling their property as part of a development that wants to be part of the city. So.
Okay, thank you for that.
But you would get notice, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
I think also on your question of the, the road widening, it is always maybe from the center it's widened because Hinky has made some commitments to right away dedication. So if they can speak about, if there are plans to widen, how that would work.
Okay. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. I apologize. Mr. Hinky, good evening.
Good evening. Good evening. Steve Hinky, 20432 Chatham Point Lane, Westfield, Indiana, 46074. First of all, thank you all very much for all your time. Thank you for your staff, for everyone involved in, in this. It's been heroic, the efforts that everybody has put in. In regards to the gentleman's questions, the gentleman who were just up, those same questions were addressed at planning commission. I responded at least to those. I indicated to them that we would certainly work with them if we could, you know, if we could relocate an entrance, whatever, one way or the other, we would do that. Certainly the bridge, issues with that, all goes for the city with engineering and everything. And I also talked to them after the planning commission meeting, met with them in the hallway, too, to assure them that we always do work with everybody to try and, you know, try and accommodate everybody. There were some concerns on, on lights and headlights and that type of thing, too, that we can create mounting, we can create, create trees and whatever. If there isn't room for that, we certainly would look at, consider moving, you know, that entry, you know, type of thing, too. So thank you again very much.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
One last comment, Madam President. One of the things that I'm encouraged by is that, Steve, with your developments, we, we have quite a few to go off of, right? And, and you've probably experienced a lot of these same issues in a lot of those developments. So it's very helpful that you're coming in with a large body of work that we've been able to get associated with. So that as some of these things pop up, we, we kind of know how those have been handled in the past. So I, I appreciate that.
Yeah, thank you. We do larger developments, as you can see. Bridgewater was probably the ground we acquired after the original part. The original part was about 700 acres. And we acquired additional acreage. It probably was about 1,100 acre development. Chatham Hills, again, we acquired additional ground. Chatham Hills is probably a 1,100, 1,150 acreage. We have a project in Lebanon we're working on that we already have zone that is 2,000 acres. What we like to do with larger developments like this, so this is not a, this is a large development, it's a large development for Noblesville, but it's not something that's, oh, wow, we've never handled this, you know? The smaller development was probably Holiday Farms at Seinesville. It was, there was only 600 acres. So. But what we, the thing that we can do, as you can see from all this planning, is we have a coordinated community within a community. We have connectivity, you know, of neighborhoods that are intergenerational. And, and so from that standpoint, we can offer, also offer a lot more amenities that you can't normally do if you have an 80 acre development or 150 acre, you know, development. So that's why we're excited about, about this and picking up the original parcel and then the original, the additional parcels that came with it. But again, thank you all very much. We appreciate it very much. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Any other council comments? I will say to the, to the two gentlemen who spoke, if you have other concerns, please don't hesitate to reach out to council members. I think I've communicated with your wife, Mr. Hester, so please just keep us in the loop. I, I know that the Hinky family and, and they want to make everybody happy. So we look forward to having them in the, the city of Noblesville for sure. Anything else? Nope. We are adjourned.